Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, February 18th. I'll move back a little bit. Monday, February 18th, 2013. This is a regular meeting of council. We have all council members present, so obviously we have a quorum. Our first action will be to dispose of some minutes. First, the special session of city council held December 10th, 2012, and the regular sessions held on December 17th, 2012, January 22nd, 2013, and February 4th, 2013. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes, please?
So moved.
All those in favor of accepting these sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Minutes are accepted. I have just two pieces of communication regarding liquor license changes. One is simply a change of name, it appears. Courtside Pizza, operating on 41 North Court Street, going to change their name to J-Bar LLC at the same address. And we also have a liquor license that was placed in safekeeping when the West End Tavern went out of business. This liquor license is going to move. At the moment, it's going to be still called West Side Tavern, Inc., but it'll be doing business at 544 Richland Avenue. If anybody has any questions or concerns about these changes, they need to complete the Division of Liquor Control and through our clerk of council, she would give you the ways to communicate with them. I have no other communications. Communications from elected officials, the mayor?
Just a couple of things. I believe you have a copy of the annual report for the Economic Development Council. I had it distributed to your mailboxes there. Also, I just gave you this piece here, which is this invitation to Friendship Day. It's by a student group, organization, that's going to be taking place the 23rd, which is a Saturday, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Athens Community Center. Actually, supposed to be working on bullying, teen and youth bullying. Other meetings that I want to let you know about is there's going to be this Athens Budget Town Hall meeting, the 25th. I believe you got our notice on that last week. This is February 25th, 5:30 to 8:00, at the community center. This is going to be discussing the Ohio budget and how it's going to shape up, I guess. And last, I have is at, let's see, the 27th of February, between 9:30 and 11:30, there's going to be a flood risk review meeting. This is put on by FEMA. I'm going to be sending my city planner to it, Paul Loeb, but I just want to let you know about it. They've been essentially doing a review of the Rip Hocking River, and they're going to have a report to talk about it, I guess. So if you want copies of this, I can get it to you as well. And that's all I really have.
Okay. A little out of regular turn. Law director?
I have no report for you tonight, Mr. President.
Okay. And the auditor's office.
Thank you. I just want to say one thing. For me, in two weeks, I hope to give a year-end report for 2012 to council. I thought I'd save that and not do that tonight because our tax administrator, Tina Timberman, here is to give everyone an update on our CCA program that we've been running.
Good evening, everyone. I'll make it quick tonight. I just wanted to give you a brief update of what was going on with the CCA program. I know there's been a lot of questions and a lot of inquiries. In January and early February, there was 2,197 letters mailed to Athens city residents. Since the letters have went out, they've received approximately 400-plus responses. Of those 400 responses, there's been over $50,000 in bills generated. So currently, CCA has collected $16,000 as of Friday. Now, we have received $1,470 from them so far. We should receive a pretty good chunk in March as well. I've received information on 23 new taxpayers that will be required to file going forward. And in addition to the $16,000 they have received, we've also had six new taxpayers come into our office and file their 2011 and 2012 returns, and we have collected $4,450. I just want to let you know, the majority of that is just 2011. Only like 500 of it was from 2012. And those taxpayers will be coming back before April the 15th to file their 2012 and pay the tax due as well. In addition to that, I spoke with council member Patterson last week about the follow-up letters. Currently, CCA did not have a follow-up letter. Once you complied, they were not sending a letter out to let you know that everything was okay unless there was a balance due. I spoke with the person in charge of CCA Friday and asked that we start generating follow-up letters so the taxpayers that have complied know that the audit's been completed and there's no further investigation and everything was fine. They are going to start doing that. They asked me to send a template up to them tomorrow because they were closed today, and that will start them in the process of generating that letter. And hopefully, in a couple of weeks, we'll be able to get those out. We've also discussed with them second letters. We're going to change up the program a little bit and have maybe not such a confusing letter as a first time and maybe a little softer letter after everything went out. And, you know, I'm sorry, I apologize. As a tax person, I just look at it and it's just information to me. I think that after sitting down with the taxpayers, reading the letter with them and everything, it was a little harsh, and we kind of want to soften that up and let them know because of the non-mandatory filing. Just change the wording around so it doesn't sound like you're avoiding your taxes as much as we're just doing an audit to make sure the taxes are being paid.
That, we didn't write that letter. That's a form letter given to us by CCA. And I think another reason for the wording in that is because a lot of cities in Ohio have mandatory filing. So there would be, you would be able to eliminate a lot of people who got letters in Athens because we don't have mandatory filing.
We just asked them, since we are unique in our own right, that we not follow the same program that they have with all their mandatory filing cities and that we customize ours going forward for us.
I'd like to say thank you for that action because we on council have heard from a fair number of residents who have felt that the second letter in particular was pretty harsh and scary. And also, there's still a significant number of people who know that their taxes have been withheld, but their employer doesn't seem to be cooperating with you. And so these individuals are getting follow-up letters which are not making them very happy.
A large percentage of people who got letters to begin with don't owe any taxes.
Right.
The problem is that when your employer files your taxes for you, we have an account in your employer's name. We don't have accounts for everybody that they send us withholding taxes on. We do have access to those names, but we didn't have any way of providing a list of those people to CCA to eliminate them from the mailing. So if we had mandatory filing, we would have been able to do that. And that was just something we couldn't avoid.
Since we don't require electronic reconciliations was our problem. If we had had those electronically, we could have uploaded it and they'd have had a list of all the Athens employees. No second letters has actually went out yet. We've got to freeze on it until we get the new letter designed. So there shouldn't be any second request letters out as of yet.
Are you talking about the assessment letters? If they did owe money, then they have a letter?
Are you talking about the bills?
People who are convinced that they do not owe any money are getting assessment letters that are...
They are welcome to bring us to my office with what they provided CCA, and I'll review it and be able to at least explain why they're being invoiced or make sure everything is correct.
That's the other thing to keep in mind. Just because your employer withholds, it doesn't mean that you don't have some other income that you still need to pay on. And that's what the CCA is looking at. They're looking at your federal tax return, so they know what you're reporting as income. And if it doesn't match up to what we have, then you probably do owe us money. Or not, but as Tina said, you're welcome to contact her and she'll help you work through that process.
Other council members?
Yeah. Member Gossner? Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, how many taxpayers does the city have total? And so I'm wondering sort of what percentage receives letters?
We have approximately 15,000 accounts. So, I mean, however, I would say we send out, on average, 4,000 forms. Not every account that we have is active. A lot of them are refund accounts as well. But we have approximately 4,300 resident accounts and 7,000, 8,000 business accounts, and then approximately another 3,000 to 4,000 withholding accounts.
Okay. So a pretty good percentage of people that work in the city receive these letters, you would say?
Well, if you add that up, what'd you say, about 14,000?
Well, the problem is, we don't know how many are residents and how many are non-residents. You would want to base that off of how many Athens residents there are and divide that by the 2,200 letters to get your percentage.
I guess what really concerns me is that usually when there's an audit and people have to dig back for six years, seven years, it's a targeted audit in some way, and it's just, you know, an individual. This is really a good chunk of our community that's having to do the work for these audits and face the stress and deal with the letters and not knowing, the uncertainty of not knowing what's going to happen if they're unable to find their paperwork, for example.
And if CCA's been really good about working with them if they're not able to find paperwork, they can see the IRS records. And the problem is, the IRS does not provide the withholding for the municipalities. So if they have their employer's information, if they have a W-2 from 2007 and they've worked at the same place and they can verify with me, they'll call me directly to verify that that tax was withheld in those cases. So, I mean, they've been really great with working with the taxpayers as well. A lot of taxpayers have been coming into my office, and I have been working with them to get the information to provide to CCA and to verify if it's just a W-2, that the taxes have been withheld, and sending that information directly for them so that they're not wondering if there's any follow-up needed or anything like that.
And I think your office has done everything you can to help people and to provide whatever assistance you can to make sure they're able to provide the documents and help send it securely and things like that. And I think that's appreciated by people that I've talked to that have contacted your office.
Thank you.
I looked at the contract, and it's a self-renewing contract each year. And I'm wondering if we want to continue to do this every year in the city or if we want to decide that we don't want this to happen every year. And so this is just an open question for people to consider. There's, if I read the contract correctly, we would need to notify the CCA by July 1st if we decide not to continue this program next year. So just something for everyone to be aware of.
Now, the second year, if you do, and you are correct, we do have the option to renew or not to renew. And I'm not even positive they'd make a stick to the July 1st. The July 1st is so that they can pull down the IRS extract for Athens. That's the only reason there's a deadline. If we say in October, we don't want to run the program, well, they're not going to waste their time sending the letters out. The thing about is, follow-up is not the same as your first round. That's why this has been so difficult. They save that information. So if you got a letter and they verified that your employer is withholding your tax for you, the second round, you're not going to get that letter. They would pull that data back and say, okay, we know this person works here, their employer is withholding for them, we're not going to generate a follow-up letter. That was my main question when we started the program, is you're going to save this, you're not going to, every year, get this letter from CCA. And of course, if we ran a program again next year, we're only targeting 2011. We wouldn't target back because we've already went back and done all the prior years. This is just, the hard time is your first time because we went back six years. If we'd have chose just to do one, then we'd have had to do them individually and they could have got up to six letters for it.
So of the 2,200 letters sent out, you've received 400 responses, so about one-fifth of the people who have received the letters have responded already. So maybe that's something we review later. That would be helpful, I think, for us to have the information by July, maybe even by June, so that we could see, well, here was the grand total of responses.
Well, with tax season coming up on them, it's going to delay the amount of information they get put in. And I can honestly tell you that there was a lot of Athens stuff received last week, but it hasn't been processed yet. So the compliance could be higher, and we just don't know about that. And we should have better numbers by July, but we're still going to be working on second requests probably by that time. So, I mean, the program's not going to be final. And again...
We've asked them not to send those second letters for people that ignored the first one until after tax season because this is, we're coming up on a pretty busy time in our office with two people and all that. So that will run into, you know, end of April and pretty close to July 1st, so...
Plus, we've had a lot of people contact our office about throwing away the letter, and they're realizing it wasn't a scam. So we're trying to get those letters updated and sent back out to the taxpayers and get that information out there. So we want to give them a little bit extra time to comply due to all of the uncertainty around the program.
Member Patterson?
I want to thank you for addressing the issue of individuals not knowing where things were stood with CCA because of them feeling like they were in limbo when in fact they were clear. And just being able to have some paperwork for your records to where it shows that you have been cleared, they're asking for paperwork from us and therefore to receive something in return is nice. And I also really appreciate the softer tone of a letter in the future. Makes a lot of sense from a behavioral standpoint, just being, you know, nice to people. So thank you very much.
They've been really, really great with complying with whatever requests we've had. I mean, they always call us back. They answer our emails constantly. Anything we've asked for, they've been great to comply with. They're trying to build this program for us.
And they've worked really well with Tina. Other cities, I think I've told everyone that Toledo's running this program now, the same time that we are, and their tax administrators don't talk to any of the citizens. They just say, "Call CCA and deal with them." And we just couldn't really say that here in Athens. And that's fine. Tina's happy to talk to people and, you know, they all love her by the time they leave the office. And CCA is okay with that, too. You know, we're not trying to, you know, jip them out of any of their, you know, percentage of fees, but we need to help our local taxpayers, and we're more than willing to do that.
Tina, just so you could remind folks, what was the cost that CCA is charging us? Because I, you know, people think it's like a large amount, and I'm...
Yes. I've got nothing else about that. The cost is very low. It's up to 5%. It's based on allocation factor. They're allocating the cost for their entire department across all the cities they're working on. So currently, they're working with Akron and Dayton and us, and there's like all kinds of other municipalities up around Cleveland that they're working with. They take and they divide it out by how many transactions they process for you and how much money they collected for you, and they get an allocation factor, and they take up to 5% of what they collect.
Okay.
Tina, since we don't have mandatory filing, what percentage of people actually file in the city? Do you know a fan, a large percentage, or...
Since our accounts are kind of based amongst everyone, I don't have an idea how many are the residents and how many are the non-residents. I just have an idea how many accounts we have.
Okay, thanks.
About to keep it going too long, but what happens to those that, for whatever reason, don't respond? Say they moved and their address is wrong? Or they just, they can't find the letters and they don't have the wherewithal to follow up with you directly? Or for whatever reason, we've had 400 responses out of 2,200. There's going to be a percentage of those left that are not going to respond at all to what would happen to those people.
Those, we would move on to our second request. First of all, if they have moved, the letter's going to be returned to CCA, and they have to do all the follow-up with that. Those will be handled differently. You're not going to send a second request letter out to someone who...
The same address, right.
And they would probably try to update them. Now, when they're looking at addresses, though, they're looking at last year's federal tax information. So you have pretty much the most current address. What they might do is look for them with this year's tax information and try to update their address. As far as the follow-up, I mean, we'll work with them to proceed on our second step and try to make it easier, I think.
I guess my question is...
People who just ignore the letters because they don't think that they should have to do this. It will come back to us to deal with them as we do every other taxpayer who doesn't pay. If we know they owe us money, then we, you know, do what we do to...
So that would be the city's follow-up, not CCA's follow-up if there's not compliance with CCA?
No, it'll be a joint effort. We can't see the IRS data. What happens is, they have your tax information. Eventually, if you do not comply with it, they're going to bill you for the tax due is what's going to happen somewhere along this. And an example is, your employer, you have your W-2 wages on your federal return. If you don't end up showing them that the taxes were withheld, they're going to bill you for that again. And that's when the assessment comes out. It'll be like a bill. And at that point, until you show proof that the tax was withheld, I'll stand as a balance due. It's in everyone's best interest to go ahead and comply now, and, I mean, we're happy to help anyone get their stuff together.
Thank you all. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, we're going to move on to ordinances for third reading. These are ordinances that are up for, in most cases, final reading. And ordinance 0113, an ordinance amending the zoning plat...
Thank you. I move that we accept 0113.
Second.
This particular piece of legislation does exactly what it says. It rezones most of the R2 area over on the far east side to R1. This particular piece of legislation was brought forward by citizens many, many months ago. So it's a community acted ordinance. I want to recognize that we did, when it was first read, we did amend the first reading to redo the map, and this is for the new map that was amended to the ordinance.
And what was that amendment? The amendment?
Well, we just, that from, we scaled back the R1 scale, R1 area for some of it, so...
Council members, any questions? All those in favor of ordinance 0113 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign for opposition?
Aye.
Aye? Six to one. The motion is passed. Ordinance 0413, an ordinance amending 013212, authorizing the mayor to execute a housing revolving loan fund administration agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Development and declaring an emergency, introduced by council member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt ordinance 413.
Second.
And this particular ordinance, as noted, is an amendment of an ordinance that we passed in 2012. And what that did, this particular one, is amending the end date of that ordinance. The city of Athens authorized the mayor to work with the State of Ohio with the housing revolving loan fund administration agreement. And what this amendment ordinance does is extends our two-year agreement to three years. And so the end date will now be 12/31/2015. The reason we're amending it is that we realized when we saw the state documents that they had a different end date than our ordinance did.
All those in favor of ordinance 0413 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, for same sign? Okay. Ordinance 0413 is accepted. Ordinance 0513, an ordinance amending 013312, authorizing the mayor to enter into an administrative services contract with Hocking Athens Perry Community Action, HAPCAP, to administer the housing revolving loan fund and declaring an emergency, also introduced by council member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt ordinance 0513.
Second.
And once again, this is kind of the partner ordinance to the one that we just read and approved. The original ordinance was passed in 2012, and this allows us to enter into an agreement where Hocking Athens Perry Community Action administers the revolving loan fund agreement for us. And we needed to have the same end date of 12/31/2015 for this agreement with HAPCAP.
All those in favor of ordinance 0513 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign for opposed? Ordinance 0513 is accepted. Ordinance 0613, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $220,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes issued for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring and installing energy conservation improvements at the city's recreation center and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 0613.
Second.
And this particular ordinance takes care of the financial end of money that we borrowed for our improvements, our energy improvements at the, at the community, the city recreation center. We originally borrowed $350,000. We owe $270,000 until we passed a recent ordinance where we paid down $50,000 of that $270,000 owed. That leaves a balance that we owe of $220,000. And this, this particular ordinance then allows us to issue the notes for the bonds that will be issued for that balance due. And our percentage interest rate is 0.35% interest, I think, and that's with a local bank, and we're very appreciative of the low interest rates.
Council members, all those in favor of ordinance 0613 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 0713, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to submit an application and enter into contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for safe routes to school funds and declaring an emergency. Council member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 00713.
Second.
This particular ordinance is our fifth season with the Safe Routes to School project, and we've been very fortunate over the years to receive this funding from the Ohio Department of Transportation. Simply, this allows the city service safety director of Athens to authorize and prepare or execute the application and then move into this contract with ODOT, Department of Transportation. This is a $120,000 project estimate, and if the city of Athens has awarded the funds, it agrees to pay 100% of the construction cost over and above the maximum amount provided by the State of Ohio Department of Transportation. A couple of the slated sidewalks that we're looking at would be, I believe, listed are Slaughter, Clark, West Hills, First Street, Lancaster, and State Street, and then a construction of stairs and an abandoned alley from, on Merkel, which is from Grosvenor to Franklin. We witnessed that alley on our, a number of our visits to the city tour, street tour, both night tour and then daytime tours. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to point out, some of these areas where, as I said, where council member Butler was speaking, of sidewalks are nonexistent at this time. So we will be building sidewalks for students to walk to school. All those in favor, excuse me, all those in favor of ordinance 0813 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 0913, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT. an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the maintenance resurfacing of Route 50 near the Southwest Corporation boundary and Richland Avenue. Member Gosney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move adoption of ordinance O nine thirteen.
Second.
And this ordinance is having to do with work that the Ohio Department of Transportation is doing and, or, I'm sorry, grants that the Ohio Department of Transportation is administering. These are federal funds that are administered through the State of Ohio and
Yeah.
So this is the Richland Avenue South project that basically extends from Dairy Lane to the South Y. And it's a pretty big project that the city is envisioning here that would include roadway work, accommodating bikes and pedestrians better than we do now, lighting improvements, water lines, as well as stormwater drainage improvements.
Are we discussing O eight or O nine? I got confused.
Yeah, that sounded like O nine.
Did we skip O?
O eight is a small cities, one from the south, Richland South.
We'll go back here.
Okay. I thought, I thought something didn't feel right with that numbering. All right, well, Mr. President, if you'd like to continue.
Shall I?
Yeah, should we continue with, should we go to O nine?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me, we'll return to Richland Avenue South shortly. We are currently on ordinance O nine thirteen, and this is to work with the Ohio Department of Transportation to do some resurfacing on the Athens US Route 50 section within the city limits that includes roughly half a mile of city road there. The local cost is going to be about $36,000, and I believe this work is done by the State of Ohio, and they submit an invoice to the city.
And we pay it, yes. I think we actually have to pay it upfront. And we've appropriated the money according to the clerk of council in O two thirteen.
Okay.
So we've appropriated the money, we just need the authorization for the LPA.
So, so for clarification, this, this ordinance is the resurfacing of 50 from the end of Richland Avenue up to Blackburn Road, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's O eight.
Correct, okay, thank you.
This is
No, that was O nine.
We're on O nine.
This is ordinance O nine thirteen.
O nine.
I, I got lost and skipped ordinance O eight, and we'll go back and pick that up. But we're, Member Gosney and Member Butler, we're talking about work that's being done through ordinance O nine thirteen.
Correct.
Resurfacing with the State of Ohio.
Right, correct.
All those in favor of accepting ordinance O nine thirteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Now we're going to move backwards for a moment. Ordinance O eight thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for a Federal Highway Administration Small Cities Program grant and declaring an emergency. Member Gosney.
Thank you. I'd like to move adoption of ordinance O eight thirteen.
Second.
So let's continue with our discussion of Richland Avenue improvements. This is for pretty comprehensive infrastructure work on Richland Avenue from Dairy Lane south to the water and traffic better than we are able to now. Lighting improvements, water line improvements, as well as stormwater improvements. A really big project that would have a total cost of a little over $3 million. We're currently seeking grant funds to be able to afford this project. We, in the past, have received, we've already received $1 million in grant funding. And this is an application to get us another step of the way there so that we can, we can afford this project. This would, the grant that we would apply for, if this is approved, would cover 80 percent of construction. And of course, we would have a local match, but we always put our money into these projects.
Mayor Wile.
It's going to be tricky. Again, this is one of the high-priced projects with a very limited area of right-of-way, lots of curb cuts, lots of traffic, et cetera. I'll also point out a typo. In my ordinance, it says O eight twelve. Does it say that on yours or no?
No.
Okay.
Does the line from January 22nd?
Yeah, the actual. Okay, great. I figure it's a typo. It's easy to deal with. But again, we're hoping we can get enough money pulled together to do this in a timely manner.
Yeah, Member Patterson.
Just to clarify, because if I heard you correctly, Member Gosney, you said it was from Dairy Lane to the Y. Is it, is it up to Canterbury?
A lot of depends on the funds. I think we'd like to do it to, all the way to the Y, but Canterbury to Dairy Lane is the, is the first part if we, if we can get the money. Okay?
All those in favor of ordinance O eight thirteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance has also been adopted. We move on to ordinance ten thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, in preparation for bridge rehabilitation over Margaret Creek. Member Gosney.
Thank you. I move adoption of ordinance ten thirteen.
Second.
And this is other work that's being done within the city limits by the State of Ohio in the near future. This is to do some rehabilitation work on the bridge going over Margaret Creek on 682. It's a, just a short span. It's mostly just having to do with the bridge area there. And this is simply an agreement, I don't believe there are city funds involved in this. It's simply an agreement to allow them to do this work within the city limits.
Was there, was there an addendum that we had asked this state to?
We, we did inquire as to whether or not they would be able to accommodate some sort of bicycle lane or markings of some sort crossing the bridge. And I'm not exactly sure where that is.
I don't know either, but I can find out.
Okay. All those in favor of ordinance ten thirteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance ten thirteen has been adopted. Ordinance eleven thirteen, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Union to State on Saturday, April 20th, 2013, from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM for the International Street Fair. Member Gosney.
I would like to move adoption of ordinance eleven thirteen, please. And this ordinance, I say it every time we discuss it, it's really one of my favorite activities, one of my favorite events of the year in Athens, and I think many of our students and longtime residents alike really enjoy this. This year, the date is moving to accommodate the semester system. This would be, this is currently scheduled for Saturday, April 20th, going out through much of the day, similar to in previous years. And it's sponsored and organized by the Office of International Students and Faculty Services and, as well as the International Student Union, and the city does the work to close off the streets, set up barricades, and get ready for it.
Councilmembers have comments or questions? All those in favor of ordinance eleven thirteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This ordinance has been adopted. And now we move on to ordinances for second reading. Usually, the ordinance are just, ordinances are just read. This time, there is, it gives us the option for further discussion. Sometimes there will be some suspensions involved. Ordinance twelve thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit a fiscal year 2013 Community Housing Improvement Program, CHIP, grant, application to the Office of Community Development, Ohio Development Services Agency, ODSA, and designating Hawking Athens Perry Community Action Agency as the Community Housing Improvement Program Grant Contract Administrator and declaring an emergency. Member Fogg, do you have anything? Ordinance fourteen thirteen, an ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance. Member Patterson, anything? So we'll move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance fifteen thirteen, an ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request that we consider ordinance fifteen thirteen under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for this being that we have several bills that need to be paid from this ordinance.
Okay. All member counts, councilmembers in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Councilmember Nysley, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance fifteen thirteen.
Second.
This particular ordinance has two major sections to it, and I'll read through the details on it. The first part deals with $52,567.27. And these were for the perfection lighting improvements that were done for the city. And what happens is, is that you will notice probably about six lines underneath that, and they follow with accounts. And these are the different accounts that they're charged, that are charged to in the different departments in the city. So of that $52,567,000, $567.27, the following will go to different departments. $18,542.96 to the street department, $20,059.94 to the recreation fund, $1,576.42 to the community center, $14,734.13 to the water fund. And then lastly, $7,519.27 to the sewer fund. So that's basically your breakdown of your $52,000 to the different departments that it'll be charged to. The next section of the appropriation has to do with $4,000 to the general fund. And as discussed last week in our finance committee meeting, when the code department office had an opportunity earlier this year to replace some filing cabinets, they also decided it made perfect sense to be, to replace some very old carpeting at the same time. And the approximate total cost on that is about $7,000, $6,703. So we were able to get a discount on the carpet quoted. So of that, $4,000 is going to come from the general fund, and then other monies, the $2,703.39 will come from several other accounts. That'll be from the TC, the Transaction Code 500 and Transaction Code 2 and 300 for the remaining cost of it.
We're going some of the 200s and 300s to the 500s.
To the 500s, thank you.
We're just moving it over for capital improvements.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. The other part of this appropriation ordinance is $15,000, and this is for the Law Enforcement Trust Fund, and that's account number 293. And you might remember last week that we heard about a request from Chief of Police Pyle, and what he has requested is that there's $32,000 in that account that is unappropriated. And they typically use that money to purchase equipment we couldn't ordinarily afford to purchase with regular budget, within the regular budget. Some of the items that were used last year to be purchased were forensic supplies, surveillance wire, portable radios, and undercover vehicle. So these are the different kinds of things. So this $15,000 is appro, will be appropriated now so that the Chief of Police has the opportunity to be able to use it for different expenses that they encounter in the year. And in section two of this particular appropriation ordinance, as clarified by the mayor, decreases the general fund code 2 to 300 by $2,704 and increases the transaction code 500 for the new carpeting. Mayor Wile.
You skipped the $42,000 for furnaces for the city hall.
Which is very important because we all want to stay very comfortable in this, in this city building. Thank you for the fourth item. Yes, and this would be charged to the Capital Improvements Fund, 580, Transaction Code 500. And these will be for two energy-efficient boilers for the city building.
Okay. Okay. The rules have been suspended for ordinance fifteen thirteen, and we have a motion and a second for adoption of the ordinance. So all those councilmembers in favor of adopting ordinance O fifteen thirteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. O sixteen thirteen, an ordinance amending the 2,000 part-time and seasonal staffing levels authorized by ordinance 12612. Councilmember Nysley again.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request that we consider ordinance sixteen thirteen under the suspension of the rules. The reason for this being is this affects staffing at current rate and time, so we need to move this as quickly as possible.
Okay. We have a request to suspend the rules on ordinance sixteen thirteen. All those councilmembers in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The members have, the members, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Don't suspend the members.
I move that we accept ordinance sixteen thirteen.
Second.
And this particular ordinance has to do with staffing levels and, or staffing. And what this would be is the funding, two part-time positions for seasonal workers, and this would be in the lands and building department. And then the other one is a, within the police department, and it has to do with making the pay for the auxiliary communications officer so that it is at the same rate as the other auxiliary officers. And we did have clarification from the Human Resource Director that the, the skills needed for this particular position are similar to those other auxiliary officers. So an equitable rate of pay, all at the same rate per hour, seems to be the best thing to do. So thank you for raising the question, Auditor Heck.
Thank you.
The rules have been suspended, and we have an ordinance and a second to accept ordinance sixteen thirteen. All those in favor of acceptance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, ordinance sixteen thirteen is adopted. Moving on to ordinance seventeen thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Office of Criminal Justice Services, OCJS, and declaring, and declaring an emergency. Member Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we consider ordinance seventeen thirteen under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Thank you. The suspension would be for the deadline. The deadline is February 28th, so it's coming up rapidly.
Councilmembers, all in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance seventeen thirteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you. I move that we adopt ordinance seventeen thirteen.
Second.
Thank you. This ordinance is, allows the mayor to apply for a grant through the Office of Criminal Justice Services. The grant would be $30,000, and the monies would go towards, if awarded, a replacement cruiser to replace a aging Crown Victoria with a newer, more energy-efficient vehicle, which is, again, much needed within the police force. There, there is no match with this particular grant. Without that requirement, a vehicle will probably cost somewhat more than that, but this is for the grant application.
Mayor?
I'll point out, I think the chief pilot is that this is a long shot, but I'd like to commend all the department heads who spend time doing these grants and throwing the die and hopefully we get some money from outside. So the best-case scenario is we get it and we have a cruiser that's inexpensive, otherwise it will cost more money. But as I say, they, they put a lot of effort into putting these things together, and as I say, it could be a long shot. We'll find out.
Thank you.
Again, the rules have been, on ordinance seventeen thirteen, the rules have been suspended, and we have a motion and a second to accept this, this ordinance. All those in favor? All those in favor of adopting ordinance 1713 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Moving on to ordinance 1813, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code to establish Title 45, Historic and Architectural Preservation, introduced by all councilmembers. Who will speak for all councilmembers? Member Fall.
Um, 01813, as it says, it establishes a new title within the code, Title 45, which will cover historic and architectural preservation in the City of Athens. Basically, what the first step in doing this whole new Title 45 is that this ordinance basically establishes a Historic Preservation Board, which consists of five voting members and two alternates, and they will have several duties and able to help flush out the historic and architectural preservation program that we will have in Athens. And these will consist of things like making recommendations to administration and to the council for miscellaneous program elements, act as a liaison between the local governments and individuals and organizations who have preservation as a concern in Athens, conducting a survey of cultural resources in the community, permitting or denying certification of appropriateness for certain IM properties, and survey and inventory of local historic properties. This has been a long process. The city planner, Paul Logue, has been working very hard on this title, title to establish a whole new title, takes a lot of work. He worked with the state historic preservation people to help flush this out. Many communities in our area have a historic preservation title, and one of the things that we are really excited about in this particular one is that in order to become a certified local government, you have to have a historic preservation element within your city code. And we have identified that in our comprehensive plan and such, that that's an important thing for Athens to do, because it does help access a whole lot of other types of grants that we can then use to not only do historic preservation, but there's other types of grants once we get to be a certified local government, so.
We do have a copy of the proposed code attached to each councilmember's agenda, and I think we would have copies for anyone in the audience who is interested in receiving that. This is first reading for...
First reading. I'll go through three readings.
Mayor?
Probably will try putting it on the website if it isn't there already, so we can look at it.
Good point.
Question?
Yes.
The board would be appointed by you, Mayor?
What's it say?
It's a council board.
It's a council board?
Yeah. This is similar to how the process of putting forward names and then, like, planning commission is okayed by council.
Page 2, members shall be appointed by the mayor, approved by city council. So, for your terms.
Announcements and other, yes?
I was just going to thank, we've had some input, the city planner's done a lot of work on this, so has Ron Lewis from the Athens County Historical Society has given us input on this, so I wanted to thank him and Law Director Lang for his assistance with reviewing the final document for us so we could get it moving forward.
Member Patterson?
And I'd also like to just kind of reiterate the fact that how long this has been in coming, this is part of the comprehensive plan, it's in both Phase 1 and Phase 2, and so it's, I'm really glad to see this moving forward, at least getting this down. It's now a code, will be in time, but I think this is a great move in the right direction for preserving a lot of the history of this great city.
Thank you. Now, we have a motion to accept the auditor's financial report for January 2013. Can I have my motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of adopting this financial report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The auditor's report is adopted. And now we move on... I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I have one announcement.
Yes?
I received an email from Ron Lucas today about the Green Fleet Committee meeting this Thursday, and it'll be from 10:30 to 11:30 a.m., conference room downstairs, so...
What day?
This Thursday, 21st of February. I'm currently planning to be there, but hopefully, everybody else will be there, too.
Thank you.
That's all.
Any other announcements from councilmembers at this time? Member Butler?
There is an Athens Municipal Arts Commission meeting this week as well, which is Wednesday at 5:30 at Arts West.
Anything else? Now, we will move on with opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on our agenda.
Meetings next week.
Audience members? No? Okay. Councilmembers, let's move back to us.
Planning and Development.
Planning and Development Committee would like to meet next week. Finance?
Wow, okay. Go figure.
More information on the wastewater treatment plant.
Member Patterson?
Finance.
Okay.
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay. Please, councilmembers, if you decide later on, just let the clerk know, and we'll put you on the agenda.
Yeah, just Finance and Personnel, we're meeting 2:30 Wednesday. Finance and Personnel Committee meetings?
Thank you.
That would be you.
Auditor's meeting.
See if we can round out more about the wastewater treatment plant, I imagine.
Okay. It is 8:27, and we are adjourned.